Welcome to the November tenth meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members, Straman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Friedman and the invocation by Rabbi Schechter.
Please place your hand over your body, join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members, fellow citizens. Today our thoughts and prayers are with the fallen soldiers of the Fort Hood tragedy and with their families. May God bring their families comfort and support. May the injured be healed and may we offer them our love and support. At this time, we also think of all of our United States veterans who we honor tomorrow as a grateful nation for their courageous service and dedication to our country. Dear God, source of life, we now pray for the well-being of our Glendale community and our city council. May your blessings rest upon the members of our city council. Grant them a clear vision for our city that is both wise and kind. Guide them in their positions of leadership and responsibility so that our community may be an example of justice and compassion in the world. Deepen our love for our Glendale community and our desire to serve it. Strengthen our power of self-sacrifice for our city's welfare. Teach us to uphold its good name by our own right conduct. And please, cause us to see clearly that the well-being of our community is in the hands of all its citizens. Dear God, we give thanks for the opportunity to serve. May we walk in the light of your presence and use all of our powers for blessing. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
Agenda for the November tenth, two thousand and nine, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, November fifth, two thousand and nine, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And next, please.
At three is presentation and appointments, and at three A is the agenda preview for the meetings of November seventeenth, two thousand and nine.
Let me go to Yasmin Beers, Deputy City Manager, for the preview. Yasmin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for November seventeenth, there are no business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority or for the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. We do have a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority, Director of Parks Recreation Community Services, status of program planning for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven Community Block Grant and Emergency Shelter Grant and Home Annual Action Plan. We have another joint meeting at four P.M. that same day, and that is the city council and the Glendale Water and Power Commission, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, regarding presentation on the Sacramento-San Joaquin River Delta and its relationship to reliable water supply. For the Glendale City Council meeting at six P.M. that evening, we have a number of consent items, General Manager of GWP, painting of streetlight standards on various city streets, Director of Human Resources, the Civil Service Annual Activity Report, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, amend the name of GWP contractor from Golden West Utility Company to Golden State Utility Company. Under action items, we have a number of items as well, Fire Chief Proposed Firefighter Recruit Academy, Fire Chief Agreement with Glendale Venice Medical Center to provide professional emergency medical services, the General Manager of GWP, Department Gold Award Recognition for Exceptional Utility Performance by the Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies, General Manager of GWP, Backflow Assembly Device Monthly Program Administration, General Manager of GWP, Amendment to Certain Sections of the Glendale Municipal Code Regarding the Installation and Testing of Backflow Prevention Assembly Devices, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Proposed Exemption of Public Works Yard Recycled Water Extension Project from Certain Sections of the GMC, and lastly, Director of Public Works Regarding Traffic Control Sign Inventory Services. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, please.
At three B is commendation to Mr. Luis Alfaro of Public Works.
Okay. Mr. Alfaro, there he is. Please come to the podium. I have a mayor's commendation to Luis Alfaro. With gratitude for your quick thinking and reassuring efforts assisting a lost three-year-old child, your willingness to help others is a testament to the highest values of humanity and an inspiration to us all. And I think everyone knows the details of your good work, Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if, for the benefit of the public, and maybe those who don't, if I ask Steve Zern to recount the incident that gave rise to this gentleman before us this evening?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it would be my pleasure to do that. I think the best, let me read you the letter, the note, that his administrator, Mario Nunez, sent. "On Monday, September fourteenth, a tragedy was quite possibly averted by the quick reaction of integrated waste worker Luis Alfaro. While in the middle of putting bins back on his bin truck route, Mr. Alfaro noticed a small boy, approximately three years old, walking by him south northbound across Everett Street at the corner of the eight hundred East block of Elk Avenue, getting ready to cross Colorado,"
That is correct.
--as I recall.
Yes.
Not something any of us would want to do. Unable to identify any adults with the small boy, Mr. Alfaro followed the boy and caught up with him about twenty feet south of Colorado. The boy showed every indication he was about to cross the street by himself. Mr. Alfaro gently took the boy by the hand, asked him, "Where are your parents?" The boy's only response was to point toward Colorado. Thinking the boy may be looking for his parents, Mr. Alfaro walked with the boy south on Everett in the direction from which the boy had just come. All during this time, Mr. Alfaro talked to the boy in a calming manner. Mr. Alfaro also alerted his supervisor, the office, and a call was relayed to Glendale Police. At the same time, the mother of the boy was on another line with the police department. Due to the timely response of the staff, the Glendale PD was able to inform the mother right away about her son's location. The boy had left the house while his mom was taking a shower. In observing the boy, Mr. Alfaro did not notice anything particularly wrong with him, and the boy seemed to be in good spirits. Both the mother and the police thanked Mr. Alfaro for his extra efforts to ensure the safety of the boy."
Wonderful work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. My mom always said I used to do the same thing. Whenever I had the opportunity, I was out the door as a small child. Okay, next, please.
At three C is a commendation to the Home Management Glendale Ararat Chapter on the opening of the Gogic and Canary Galustian Hall.
Okay, I see some representatives from Home Management in the audience, if they'd like to come to the podium. Everyone can come up. Have a mayor's commendation presented to Home Management, Glendale Ararat Chapter. Congratulations on the grand opening of the Galustian Hall. Your dedication to our youth by involving them in community volunteerism, athletic and cultural activities is highly commendable, and I salute your entire board for your many accomplishments and achievements. Signed Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale.
Honorable Mayor Quintero, council members, Mrs. Starbird, and staff. The Home Management Glendale Arat Chapter's grand opening of Gogic and Canary Galustian Gymnasium at North Campus took place on Sunday, October fourth, two thousand and nine. The event included a ribbon-cutting ceremony by Mr. Galustian. Approximately three hundred and fifty officials and guests came together for a common purpose to officially open and inaugurate a much-needed facility to help provide for the community's growing athletic and cultural activities. During the ceremony, in appreciation of their support, commemorating plaques dedicated to the City of Glendale and other generous patrons were unveiled. In addition, proclamations by Assemblyman Paul Krikoryan and representatives of Congressman Adam Schiff, State Senator Carol Liu, and Assemblyman Kevin De Leon were presented. It is important to note the positive impact that this new facility will have on the future of the young athletes for generations to come. It will enable us to serve a greater number of youth, get them involved, and keep them off the streets and its negative influences. Once again, on behalf of Home Management Glendale Arat Chapter's executive board and the youth that we serve, I would like to express our gratitude to you for approving the CDBG Commission's recommendation and providing much-needed funds which, along with other donations, enabled us to complete the construction of the gymnasium. We did have a presentation for City of Glendale at that day, and since Mr. Corio was the representative of City of Glendale, we presented it to him. I thought this would be a good opportunity for us to present it to...
City of Glendale, well, basically, it's an appreciation that City of Glendale has always supported, has always supported our mission, and without the support of City of Glendale, we would not have had our second center to serve more kids in the community. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Item three D on the agenda is appointment of Ms. Ramella Marcarian to the CDBG Advisory Committee. This was the nomination of Councilmember Laura Friedman.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to nominate or to appoint Ramella Marcarian to CDBG. She is an employee of Glendale Venice Medical Center, where she serves as the Director of Physician and Business Affairs. In her professional capacity, she has served on Glendale Memorial's Grant Committee for three years, so she's very familiar with the nonprofits in Glendale and with the grant process. She has worked with the entire community, especially the low and moderate income segment of our community, and she's had a number of leadership roles in improving safety, health, and wellness of underserved, underprivileged, and low-income populations. She is currently a member of Glendale Healthy Kids, the Armenian Bone marrow donor registry, and the Armenian American Medical Society Ladies Auxiliary, and I believe that she's going to be a very good addition to the CDBG Commission.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Straman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please.
At three E is appointment of Ms. Laurel Patrick to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. This was also a nomination by Councilmember Friedman.
Thank you. Many of you are familiar with Laurel Patrick. She was the former Director of Libraries for the City of Glendale for a number of years. In that capacity, she managed a $6.5 million yearly budget and 135 employees. She's extremely active in the community. She's a former president of the Kiwanis Club of Glendale. She was president from two thousand and one to two thousand and two and a member from nineteen ninety-two until present. She also was on the board, or is on the board, of the Glendale Association for the Retarded. She's on the Board of Directors for the Glendale Educational Foundation and a member of the Women's Civic League of Glendale. The reason that I appointed Laurel, besides the fact that she's demonstrated herself throughout the years as being very community-minded and very much an activist and important member of the community, is because it's my understanding that with the new configuration of the Parks Department now being Parks and Community Service and encompassing some of these programs that were formerly under the Housing Department, that this commission is going to take more of an active role in helping to facilitate the nonprofits and the service groups in Glendale. And I believe to that end that she will be a very valuable member of that commission.
I'll second. Oh, I'm the Pro Tem.
So I'll second it.
Thank you.
A roll call, please.
Councilmembers Straman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Quintero.
Mayor Pro Tem Weaver.
All right. Next, please.
At three F is appointment of Mr. Stephen Robfogle to the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. This was the nomination of Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, Stephen Robfogle should be well-known to many of you. He has been very deeply involved in the community, serving on the Board of Directors of the Glendale Unified School District Educational Foundation, the President's Advisory Council of Glendale, the Glendale Association for the Retarded, the Salvation Army. He's on the Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club. He's on the New Horizons Family Center Advisory Board. He has, I believe he's already served about two years on the Parks Commission, Parks Recreation Community Services Commission, and he's a very stable force on the commission, and I look to have great things from him during his tenure.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Straman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At three G is appointment of Mr. Vache Toshin to the Commission on the Status of Women. This was the nomination of Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. I am putting forth the nomination of Mr. Vache Toshin. We're sort of breaking tradition here on the Women's Commission by placing a gentleman on it. I hope that that suits everyone. He is, and the reason I picked Mr. Toshin is he is a practicing attorney who specializes in family law, domestic violence, child support, custody, visitation, temporary restraining orders, harassment issues, and the like. I think he will bring a fresh perspective to the Women's Commission, and I would urge his approval.
Second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers Straman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. I have a number of appointments to read. I will start with arts and culture. I would like to reappoint Armon Kevanian for the Audit Committee. Reappoint Rebecca Delfino for Building and Fire. Reappoint John Tatolien for CDBG. Reappoint Gary Cornell for GWP. Appoint Armin Ajamiyan for Parks. Reappoint Rodney Khan for Planning. Reappoint Hank Sheets for the Commission on the Status of Women. Appoint Karine Garasavian and for the Transportation Commission, reappoint Bill Wiseman.
Next, any other appointments? Okay. Next item on the agenda is city councilor staff comments.
Ms. Friedman, then Mr. Straman.
On the subject of commissions and boards, and I'm not sure if this becomes a suggestion or if there has to at some point be a discussion, but I would like us to consider setting aside one meeting a year or an extra meeting a year for each board and commission, at which time they could proactively discuss or bring up any policy recommendations that they would like to bring to council or any issues that they would like council to consider. In the past, some of our boards have seemed to operate believing that they were only there to discuss what staff brought them. I've spoken to some of our commissioners, and that's been their impression, and I think that, given that these are people who spend their times learning about and debating a lot of minutia, they often are aware of issues on the horizon before council is, and they'll often see different ordinances functioning maybe not as well as they could, and they have a lot to bring to the table. And I would like to give them that day so that throughout the year they could be sort of discussing these things and planning and thinking about policy recommendations that they would like to make to the city and have a specific day set aside just for those discussions. So is this something that would become part of our ordinance? How would that work?
It's something we should put on the agenda for discussion.
Okay.
So we'd need concurrence from a second council member? And I saw a head nod from the mayor.
Okay.
Great.
You the second council member?
Yes.
Okay. And, oh, Mr. Straman.
Just a few things. First of all, I'd like to extend my thanks to our veterans on the dais here. We seldom get the opportunity to, he's yawning, but he's one of them, and also Mr. Weaver. I don't know what other veterans are on the dais. There may be some, but I do know that my colleagues, Mr. Weaver and Mr. Quintero, serve, and I want to thank them. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and we should take the opportunity to express our thanks to our veterans. In addition to that, I'd like to make a couple of inquiries related to some loose ends and odds and ends, just two of them actually, Mr. Mayor. One is, I'd like to inquire about the status of the problematic GFI outlets up in the Moncho shopping park. I'd like some kind of a status on that. I initially inquired about that on October the twentieth.
Right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Straman, my response to that was, we have been kind of using a Band-Aid approach to keep those going. We have a couple of infrastructure issues with conduit and wiring, so I told my staff to go ahead and fix those. One is a conduit that was cut in a previous construction job and never fully repaired. The other is a little bit further over, I think, by the corner of Honolulu where there's some wiring and junction boxes that need to be repaired. So, the word I had was, today we had trenched on either side of a driveway and made a saw cut across to fix the conduit that had been damaged in the previous construction operation. Hopefully have that fixed by either the end of this week or early next week. All the materials have been ordered or on hand. The electrician was just waiting for our field crews to make the cuts. So my understanding was that cut was supposed to happen this afternoon, and the second repair will be needed shortly after that.
Thank you very much. And the second, I think, is in your ballpark too, Mr. Zern. I just wanted to know what the status of the banner poles or banner wires or what have you for the Kenneth Village, Kenneth Village?
Mr. Straman, we continue to work with the Development Services Department on this. One of the issues that we're having is originally we were looking at trying to set those poles at the corners, and we don't have a lot of room there to make sure that we maintain ADA requirements. So what I wanted to do was put together a number of options of where banner poles could be put, whether it was other locations above the corners, below the corners, possibly in the middle of the park, of the shopping park. And then, once we had those together, we were going to ask the Development Services staff to bring that back to the merchants and have a chance to go through that with them. So we ran into a little bit of a problem. I thought it might be easy just to place them on the corners and be able to get the, both north-south and east-west, on kind of a three-pole scenario, but that doesn't seem to be working from an accessibility standpoint. So we're looking at some other options, but still...
All right. So we are in touch with Renee Carpetti and then?
I believe so. Mr. Straman, we've been working through the Development Services folks, Ken Hitz, and I know he's been talking with them.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Straman, we'll be sure and get in touch with an outside date by which we can have the alternatives for them discussed.
All right. The reason I keep raising the issue is because of the importance to our, all of our retailers, but especially in our small business districts, we are well into fourth quarter, so that's the only reason I keep raising the issue. And I thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Najarian.
Just briefly, I think we've all read that there has been a rash of vehicle break-ins over the last few weeks, perhaps months, across Glendale, and unfortunately, I also have become a victim of a break-in, and I have several cars in my driveway, so you can imagine that my losses were tripled that of a normal one-car driveway. It is important that we all remember to keep our car doors locked, keep the valuables such as Walkmans, briefcases, laptops, money, checkbooks, anything like that, keep them out of sight, keep them covered. And there was an arrest last week. They caught three youths bordering on adulthood. Police apparently is not sure that these youths are responsible for all the break-ins throughout the city. They don't think they are. They think that there's several groups who are raiding the city because we're easy targets, we're relatively affluent city, and we usually have things like iPods and whatnot sitting in the car. They were caught by the alertness of a neighbor who saw someone that just didn't look like they belonged, and they called the police. The police came, pursued, apprehended, and eventually caught that ring. So aside from protecting your own property, as we do in Glendale, I'm probably preaching to the choir, everyone, please keep a lookout. If you see something that just doesn't look right, the police are not bothered at all by what you might seem to be a silly call or a call that's not founded on much facts, but they will come out and check it out, and that's the way we're going to tighten up our defenses across the city. So I hope that no one else has to suffer the losses of a vehicle break-in because it adds up. I mean, to this day, I'm still thinking of, I'm looking for my sunglasses. Where are my sunglasses? Oh, okay, well, there go my sunglasses, too. Add that to the list of items stolen. They were cool sunglasses, though.
I'm sure, I'm sure, very stylish.
Very expensive.
The next thing is, on this Sunday, the MTA is officially opening up the Gold Line East Side Extension, which is going to run from Union Station to East LA. All the rides on the Gold Line this Sunday are going to be free, and what's more, at each one of the stations from downtown Union Station towards the East Side Extension, there are going to be parties, block parties, at each one of those stations, Little Tokyo Arts District, Soto Street, Mariachi Plaza, East LA Civic Center. So it's going to be a whole route of parties from about ten o'clock to about five o'clock with giveaways and bands and food and great things to do. And the rides are free, so you can pick it up here at the Delmar Station in Pasadena, ride it through Union Station all the way to the east side, and have some fun this weekend if you haven't been on one of our metro rails. It's a great opportunity to do so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. No? Weaver? Okay, well, I just want to talk about the retirement dinner for a number of firefighters this Saturday evening, and it's so interesting because it's so easy to look at firefighters and to think, oh, boy, they have it made. There they are in their firehouses, and they're cooking, and they're doing all kinds of good stuff. But it's interesting when you talk to the retirees, and they talk about, yeah, my knees shot, my back hurts, my, all of the physical issues that these people go through throughout the years. It's not an easy job at all, in addition to the odd hours and having to be up at night going to calls all over Glendale with the paramedics and so forth. It's just physically a tough, tough job. In addition to it obviously being a very, there were a couple of firefighters there that had been burnt. One of them was almost killed and had to retire early. But in addition to the sort of psychological problems that come with that type of employment... But in addition to the sort of psychological problems that come with that type of employment, just a physical toll that it takes over a 25- or 30-year period. But anyway, it was very uplifting talking to them and the families, their wives and so forth, and so I wish them all good fortune and told them to just stay home for a few years, not to do anything other than relax and to try to get back to good health. Anything else from the staff? Okay, next, please.
Five is consent items, including minutes. The following routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. One card has been submitted for 5B, and we will require an abstention from Councilmember Najarian on the minutes.
Right. I do have a card on 5B, so we'll pull 5B.
Move the consent calendar with exception of 5B noting the abstention.
Second.
Okay.
October 20th minutes, only for Mr. Najarian.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Freedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Hi.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Please read 5B into the record.
5B is Director of Public Works regarding East Garfield Neighborhood Rehabilitation Project, Plan Numbers 1-2942, 2-388, and 49-142, and this is Spec. Number 3313. 5B1 is Resolution Adopting Plans and Specs and Directing the City Clerk to Advertise For Bids.
Well, let's hear from the Speaker, Mike Mohill.
Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale. Good evening, council members. I'm very disappointed on council comments right now because I was just informed that Glendale hit the LA Times newspaper. Not good. Drugs, bad situation. Okay? Qual -- is it -- am I -- Mr. Howard, am I correct?
It's supposed to be on the issue.
Am I right by making that comment, sir?
No, sir, you're out of order. If the mayor so chooses to rule you out of order, the items, you speak on the item on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
You have to have a nexus.
All right, let me go on with item 5B then, okay? I'm very excited that we're going to have another mini-park in South Glendale. That's what this is all about, the East Garfield Neighborhood Rehabilitation Project, and part of the plan is to have a park. Because this is what I read in the newspaper, Glendale News Press. And my question is, can't we have something more than just a mini-park in South Glendale? We have crimes throughout the city. It's either soccer fields or jails. And we're seeing that right now in Glendale, North Glendale particularly, with the drug situation. If we had more time with the kids playing, gymnasium, baseball fields, basketball, et cetera, we don't. And another mini-park is better than nothing, I agree, but why can't we tear down some old buildings and make a park the size of a city block? I know I have that in Glen Oaks Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a -- Freedman?
I have a question for staff, and I'll keep asking this until I see it, until we have a total streets program. But is part of this rehabilitation project going to include upgrading pedestrian and bicycle amenities on the roads that are going to be affected?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Freedman, to my knowledge, we're doing some sidewalk repairs in this area. This is more of not a route as much as it is a block in the neighborhood, but to my knowledge, we don't have anything included in this as far as bike lanes or anything like that, but that's -- it doesn't mean that we can't take a look at that. Those aren't impossible.
In terms of the sidewalks, maybe we can look to see if there's any need for a bench or -- and in terms of the bike, I'm not suggesting a bike lane, but I just think as policy that as we look at rehabilitating different areas, we should look at upgrading whatever we can for bicycles and pedestrians, which can be, as you know, sometimes as simple as having a cross -- a button that a bicyclist can push for a light or a curb cut. That's more of what was recommended by Berkeley when they came and did their traffic safety program, where they were recommending that we change the way we do our curb cuts, all of those sorts of upgrades. I would like to see, at some point, us address the policy of -- address making that policy and making a total streets program policy of the city so that I don't have to keep -- so that I don't have to keep asking this question every time one of these comes up.
Well, Ms. Freedman, we are looking at every project where we can take advantage of those type of situations. We're already looking at the curb cuts and doing those a little differently. We work with Mr. Bogart, and while the push button was initially something that was thought to be beneficial to bikers, it has turned out that maybe it isn't so beneficial, so that Mr. Bogart has asked us to reconsider, and we're looking at a couple of different technologies, which include sensors and cameras, so that bicyclists don't have to actually physically press something that could impair their ability to defend themselves in traffic. But we do continue to look. We don't have a formal policy, but we continue to look at every segment. In fact, as you're aware, the first bike segment we're putting together is actually a series of two or three projects coming together as one to create a bike area. And we'll continue to look at amenities for pedestrians. This project has 46 new trees being planted, so hoping to make the sidewalks a little bit and the aesthetics a little bit nicer as well, but we will continue to do that.
And I realize that, and I, not to drag it out, I just want to be sure that if we're replacing curbs, upgrading roads, that we don't have to go back in in a year when we decide that we're going to now look at that again for those types of things.
Understood, makes perfect sense.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion in a second.
Move 5B.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Freedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Next would be Oral Communications at 6.
All right, we'll do the demonstration.
Announcements?
Portion first, and Rundle, followed by Rabbi Rick Schechter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople and everyone who's here. I'm here from the League of Women Voters to tell you tonight about an educational program that we are doing next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, on the 19th -- I'm sorry, it's been the 19th ever since we started. It's the 18th, it's Wednesday, the 18th of November, from 6:30 to 8:30. And it's -- the program is on the financing of the schools in Glendale, and it's going to be held at the School District Administrative Center up the street on Jackson. And the public, of course, is invited, and we hope that they'll all come and attend, where our speakers include from the Unified School District, we have the Superintendent and the Chief Financial Officer, the President of the Board of Education, a member from the PTA Council, and a member from the Teachers Union. And we expect them to talk about how our schools are being financed now, and are there any current problems that we should be taking care of, and what changes might be made to improve that financing. We expect it'll be a lively discussion, and it's a topic certainly that's of great importance to the citizens and parents of Glendale. And if you have questions and can't be there, you can submit them by phone to our phone, which is area code 818-247 or 2407, or via our website, when I will not give you the website on the TV, I think that's -- that nobody ever remembers. If you remember, it's the League of Women Voters, you'll be able to find us. In addition, of course, we will be taking written questions from the audience at the forum, which will be next Wednesday, the 18th, from 6:30 to 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Rabbi Schechter, followed by Armand Gregorian.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council and everyone. The annual Community Interfaith Thanksgiving Service is coming soon, and everyone in Glendale is warmly invited to attend. It will be held on Monday, November 23rd, at the First United Methodist Church of Glendale on the corner, at the corner of Broadway and Kenwood, far from here, beginning at 7:30 PM. The service will include Thanksgiving greetings, prayers, and writings from the sacred scriptures of many faith traditions, along with uplifting music and historical American proclamations. It will be followed by a reception with refreshments. Last year, we were so honored to have, at that point, Councilmember Drayman, who was mayor, was so honored to have him present and making the remarks that we were all blessed by his presence, the community was blessed by his presence. To express our gratitude this year for the many blessings in our lives, guests are asked to bring a non-perishable item, which will be donated to a needy organization in Glendale. Again, the annual Community Interfaith Thanksgiving Service will be Monday, November 23rd, at the First United Methodist Church of Glendale, corner of Broadway and Kenwood, beginning at 7:30 PM, and everyone is invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Armand Gregorian, followed by Linda Ardered Musayan.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council and staff, Armand Gregorian from Homenetmen. I have Ms. Linda Musayan with me. If you recall, a few months back, I was here and asked for your sponsorship for the Fourth Annual Glendale Friendship Games. We concluded those games in the weekend of October 26th, 27th, and Ms. Musayan is here to give a report of the games to you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Musayan, and I'm a member of the Glendale Friendship Games Organizing Committee. The mission of the Glendale Friendship Games is to promote unity and to bring the young athletes of our community, of our diverse community, together in a friendly and healthy environment. This year's event was a huge success with over 500 participants ages seven and above in the three sports of soccer, basketball, and volleyball. The participants in soccer were AYSO Region 88, Glendale 06 Soccer Group, CBO FC Soccer Group, MTM Soccer Club, High United Soccer, and Homenetmen Glendale RRI Chapter. In basketball, all of our local area high schools, including Hoover High School, Glendale High School, Crescent Valley High School, our neighboring Burbank High School, Pasadena High School, and close by Franklin High School and Belmont High School in LA. In volleyball, the participants were Black Panthers Volleyball Group, No Limit Volleyball Group, Homenetmen Mosses Chapter, Experiment Volleyball Group, Glendale United Volleyball Group, and Warriors Volleyball Group. Above all, we had over 30 volunteers helping with this event, two-thirds of which were our own Glendale RRI youth athletes. In conclusion, the 2009 Glendale Friendship Games surpassed even our own expectations in attracting the involvement of the youth of our community as participants, as volunteers, and as spectators. We look forward to the city's support for the 2010 Glendale Friendship Games. We would also like to invite the council members to an informal appreciation evening for the Glendale Friendship Games to be held on Thursday, November 19th, at 7:00 PM at RRI. Dinner will be served. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here to talk about the Friends at the Library and their upcoming events. A week from Thursday, we're going to have Lisa -- do we have it up on the board?
There's nothing coming.
Okay. We're going to have Lisa Goldman-Copp, who's the author of Poison Ivy, talking at the library. That's a week from Thursday, 7:00. Poison Ivy deals with bullying at the children level, that is, children up through junior high school. She's written a novel about it, Poison Ivy, which deals with the subject of bullying, and we urge all parents to come to this event and learn a little bit more about some subtle insights concerning bullying that goes on at school and the playgrounds, et cetera. So at 7:00 Central Auditorium, and parking is validated at the exchange. Now, on the 19th, I mean, on the 2nd of December, rather, December 1st, Vince Bullosi, famous lawyer, prosecutor, and author, will return to the library to help us into our ninth year as -- since the formation of the Author Artists and Friends Series, which I've chaired for almost nine years now. And Vince Bullosi actually has lived in this Glendale area for many years, and I was reminded on the way in that when he was prosecuting the famous Manson trial, out of which came the Helter Skelter book that he wrote, which became the most famous bestselling true crime novel in history, and it still is, he, living in the Glendale area during the trial, they were concerned with the possible threats against his life because of the very nature of the Manson trial and the multiple defendants. And the police, Glendale police, were out there protecting him. They were paroling, patrolling his house and watching over him, and he's still here, so they were successful. Now, beside the Helter Skelter, we're having what we call an evening with Vincent Bullosi on December 1st, 7:00. I urge you to come early. And he's going to talk about all his books, all his famous books. He's talked, he did the book about outrage, which depicted the real reasons that O.J. Simpson got off from free from the murder case. And he's written a lot of other books, and I don't have time to go into them right now. So come, come to the library, December 1st, see Vincent Bullosi. Thank you.
You very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Okay, next, please.
Next at 8, this portion for announcements, yes, will be closed. We'll be returning to General Oral Communications. 8 is action items. 8A is Director of Parks, Our Creation and Community Services Regarding Proposed Application to the Statewide Park Development and Community Revitalization Program of 2008. At 8A1 is a resolution supporting the submission of a grant application to the statewide park development and community revitalization program for funds to develop Maryland Mini Park.
Okay, before we get started, I want to announce that anyone wishing to speak on any of the action items this evening, turn in a card. Turn in your card if you want to speak on the action items, 8A through 8D. Go ahead, Mr. Chapchan.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero. Good evening and good evening, members of the city council, and I will be very brief on this. As you know, November, in November 2006, the voters of California approved Prop. 84, which also included about $400 million for parks projects. Until recently, those bond monies were frozen. They are just now becoming available to cities, counties, and districts throughout California. There will be two rounds of $184 million competitive grant processes. The maximum of each, at the first round at least, is $5 million. And this is the only big bond measure we have this time. We don't foresee any more in the future, so we really want to get ahead of it and compete for some of these dollars. And we anticipate many cities, counties, and districts are going to be competing for these dollars. We looked at funding criteria for this grant, and we feel that the Maryland Mini Park project would be perfect in terms of being competitive for this. Several reasons. One is, they're looking at new parks more than they are expanding of parks. Two is, it's in a city, it's in a part of the city that's park deficient, and that's a big piece of the criteria. And it's also in a city, part of the city that has a significant poverty level, and as many, as well as other criteria. Applying for the grant, though, does mean it may be a nine-month delay process in the project itself. So rather than finish the project next year, it would be another nine months if we apply for this money, and I want to make sure you all knew that you were okay with that. But we feel that this outweighs, getting the $1 million would outweigh the nine months, only that we could use that money somewhere else, whether it's in parks or other parts of the city. So we're here to just get your support for that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Chapchan, how many projects can we put forward in the application process?
Well, I don't think there's a limit. Normally, they take a look at these, it's just really a balancing act, whether or not they see you as too greedy, and it's just a balancing act. We don't really have any park projects besides Maryland at this point that would qualify. We don't really have any park projects besides Maryland at this point that would qualify.
Swimming pools don't qualify?
Um, no, not under this. It would be an expansion, yeah, but between expand, they're really looking at new park projects more than anything else.
I see. Okay. Comments, cards? I do have a card. Well, for myself, I do think it's worth going forward with the application, and just to be specific, the report states that there are 5,630 families living below the poverty level within a half-mile radius of the project site, so 5,630 families within a half-mile radius who are below the poverty level. Okay, have a seat, Mr. Chapchan. Mike Mohill.
Evening, Mayor, Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale. One of my favorite subjects matter, helping out the poor, and Glendale has the honor of being one of the poorest cities of the county, especially in South Glendale. By your own documents, we have neglected South Glendale. I'd like to thank the staff for bringing it to the attention of the city fathers and the public. What are these honors? Well, we have point 29 acres for 1,000 residents in critical park area, page 2, and like you said, Mr. Mayor, we house the income of 32,000 and 5,631 fami... excuse me, 5,631 families living below the poverty level. And in order to get this grant money, we have to be very, very bad. You think Beverly, let's compare ourselves to Beverly Hills, Mr. Weaver. Do they have this, would they qualify for this? I don't think so, but we have the honor of having one of the poorest sections of the county, right here in South Glendale, high density. That's what you even, that's even what Mr. The man in charge of the Parks Department says, we have the highest density. Mr. Fish from the Fire Department told me, Greg Fish, said that, you know what, South Glendale, density is like San Francisco. So, what do we give South Glendale? Crumbs. Another mini park? Why not? Why not a soccer field? Why not a football field? Why not basketball courts? Now, mini parks are good for you-know-who, grandfathers and their children, grandchildren, not for teenagers, not for young adults to play, but they can do drugs instead. After all, we had, we made the LA Times newspaper this morning, drugs in Glendale, another honor to have, a smear on our face. What are we going to do about that? Wouldn't talk about that 10, 15 minutes ago, what's new in Glendale, but I have to bring it up, because I'm embarrassed that this city does not treat the people south of the 134 freeway equal to the people who live north of the 134 freeway. Thank you very much, and thank you for the honor.
Mr. Freedman.
Mr. Mohill, I know I'm going to regret asking this.
Yes.
I'm going to anyway.
Absolutely.
If we were to identify, let's say, a block to put in a soccer field.
Yes.
Would you be willing to hand-deliver the eviction notices to all of the people who live there?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Tell them that they're going to have to find another place to live?
Yes, we have plenty of...
Even though we already have about 8,000. How many people do we have on our waiting list for subsidized housing now?
About 8,000.
About 8,000. So, even though there's 8,000 people ahead of them, you'd be willing to tell them that they're going to be out on the street?
Yeah.
All right, just wanted to, just wanted to understand.
Should I tell you why? Because what they'll do is make it better for the people who follow them. After all, our forefathers went ahead, and the soccer field didn't happen, the soccer complex didn't happen overnight. It took years of planning, and so would this, a full city block for South Glendale.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking, raising the question, Mr. Freedman.
Let me add that the soccer fields were open to rain, absolutely no families were displaced. Most of the land was owned by the city, if I remember correctly.
I'm sorry, for which side?
The sports complex.
Sports complex? Oh, yeah, that was, that was city property and remnant Caltrans property.
Right.
There were no, no residents that moved in that property.
No one was displaced. Mr. Weaver.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, do you remember back in the 1980s where you and I and Ginger Bremberg went back to the National League Cities to receive recognition for things that we had done in the city, and my assignment was speaking about South Glendale, where in the 80s, we'd already invested over $32 million in South Glendale. And the last, I counted on a map I put up, a few weeks ago, we have 13 parks in South Glendale as of now, and that 32 million was before Pacific Edison, and before the park at San Fernando and, and Brand, and before a lot of other things. So, I'd be willing to bet we've already invested some $50 million down there. You may not see it all, but we have invested, that's more than we invested in the rest of the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I need a motion for 8A.
Yes, I'd like to move 8A.
Second. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At 8B is City Treasurer, regarding City Treasurer's quarterly investment review. As of September 30th, 2009, at B1 is a motion to note and file the report.
Or file, next. Mr. Starbird.
I'll go to esteemed Mr. Bruckey, City Treasurer.
Yes.
Say "steamed," I said "that's steamed."
(laughing) Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, I'd like to present a quick snapshot of the portfolio at the end of the first quarter ending September 30th. The city portfolio ended the first fiscal quarter at $450 million, down $33 million from the $483 million at the end of June, June 30th. The bulk of that difference was the $23 million prepayment of the PERS annual assessment. The average rate of return for the quarter slipped from 2%, slipped one basis point down to 1.99%. Along with that dip, interest earnings decreased $90,000 to total $2.26 million for the quarter. Only as a point of information, the average rate of return for the state fund, the local agency investment fund, dropped 60 basis points from 1.5% to under 1% to end the quarter, averaging 90 basis points. Moving to the marketplace and looking at the outlook for the remainder of the fiscal year, now that the recession is over, it's the pace and the strength of the recovery that matters most. Without housing leading the way, job growth and improvement will be slow. Until businesses start adding to their payrolls, probably not until next year, consumer spending and manufacturing will likely remain unsteady. Another real impediment is the almost complete lack of new loan growth among U.S. banks. In fact, banks continue to reduce assets in order to deleverage, and many still fear further write-offs. Therefore, with continued weakness in the financial sector and little prospects for a quick turnaround in the economy, the Fed will continue to keep rates low, and if so, it will be a long time before short-term rates increase enough to have much of an impact to our earnings picture. Looking for a bright side, the city portfolio is safe, it is sound, and it is liquid, and we're doing the best we can in a dreary situation. Mr. Mayor, those are my comments.
Are there any comments or questions for the City Treasurer? Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Bruckey, page 6, line 3, no, I'm just kidding. There've been, there've been some recent stories about some wrongdoing in the PERS retirement system and their investment portfolio, and some, some, I'm not sure if it's misappropriations, but some brokerage dealings with some insiders, and it was pointed out they had made some very bad land deals. New Hall Ranch, I think, was one of them. There were some other condos or something, condo projects they had invested in.
In Manhattan.
Do you see, yes, yes, in Manhattan, do you see a change? I mean, do we have a better outlook for PERS such that our contribution rates, I mean, if they're cutting out this dead wood and these really bad investments, and maybe they're tightening their, their criteria for investments, do you see any potential bright side in the next year to two years for the PERS rates?
On the PERS rates, I think, Mr. Najarian, I'd like to defer that to our Finance Director, Mr. Elliott, who seems to be much closer to the PERS actuarial rates than I.
He actually approved that Manhattan land deal.
(laughing) I wish. In anticipation of potential comments, PERS has lost a great deal of money, and as I think the article in the Times showed, the rate of return as of this, 630 of '09, is minus 23%. They are trying to, as I understand it, trying to get back to more sound investments, but they have a whole investment oversight board that takes care of who buys what, when, and how. From our standpoint with rates, they've implemented a new three-year smoothing that will stall or slow down our rate increase, but we are anticipating a fair amount of rate increase in our PERS rates. I don't know if that helps, but... If I can, for which we'll be noting in the quarterly financial report, recommending beginning to set some of our savings aside so we can begin to do our own smoothing of increased retirement costs and its impact on our budgets in the years ahead. We'll get to that with the subsequent item.
Other questions?
Move 8B1. Thank you, Mr. Bruckey.
A second.
Actually, Mr. Bruckey, I did have a question. In terms of some of your commercial paper, are you pretty much staying at the same percentage, or is it gone up a bit, or? I haven't bought commercial paper in about six months. Uh-huh.
How about these corporate medium notes like General Electric and Bank of America?
They're all... We haven't bought any corporates since in over a year.
Okay, so these are just what you've had?
Yeah, that's, that's inventory, and we're, I look at those every day, basically to make sure that, that they, that they fit the portfolio. We are enjoying, because they were bought a couple of years ago, when rates were 4% and 5%, and if you, if you look at, I mean, we...
5.3, 5.25.
Yeah, fours and fives, which are a rarity in our portfolio today. I think I mentioned that our, that our portfolio is returning about 2%. In fact, the challenge, that is doing a lot, those fours and fives are doing a lot to keep it at that, at that 2% level, which, by the way, I think is the magic number for this coming year, is to bring the portfolio in at a return at or above 2%.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bruckey. I have one card, Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale. I read this report like everybody else did here. The thing that caught my eye was the following sentence on page 2, market outlook. Now that the recession is over, it's the pace and strength of the economy, the recovery matters most. The recession is over. Amazing, isn't it? Let's see, headline news, LA Times, uneasy growth, jobless rate 2.7%. Unemployment total actually like 17.2% in the city and the county. Foreclosures in Glendale abound? One in every, one in, one in nine, excuse me, one in 109 homes are in foreclosure. That's where they displace people from South Glendale can move into. We have free housing maybe, huh? Total banks failure top 100, headline news. Oh, by the way, I forgot to mention, let's talk about Brand Boulevard of Cars. They're in a slump, not that the Clunker Law went into effect. It says, dealerships say their numbers are down, some say sales staffs begin, they're laying off people. So, please, how can you tell? And then I have, then we have the audacity that the city staff all initial this report. Rubber stamped it. Did anybody read the report? Should have Mr. Our Treasurer at least eliminate the word, the recession is over. Living at that, that's an embarrassment to the city and this financial staff. I mean, I don't have a degree in, in finance, I'm just an ordinary, you know, guy who lives in Glendale, but I read the report, and it's an embarrassment to say that. A million dollars in salary, I think, about here. Let's see, Mr. The Treasurer, the Assistant Treasurer, the City Manager, Mr. Howard, all signed up on this thing.
You're done. Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
I can bet I'm done.
Motion in a second.
The truth hurts, I know. Thank you.
There was a motion and a second.
Yeah, there was.
Yes, with, with a comment, I think Washington DC is the one that said the recession's over.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At HC is Director of Public Works, Acting Chief of Police, regarding red light camera photo enforcement. At C1 is motion authorizing City Manager to execute an amended and restated agreement with Redflex Traffic System, Inc. At C2 is resolution appropriating $633,300.
All right, Mr. Starbird, perhaps the lieutenant can give us a very quick rundown.
I'm more than happy to volunteer the lieutenant for a rundown.
You mean, you don't want the three pages of notes that I have?
No.
Okay, then let me, then let me give you a brief one. Mr. Mayor, Member of, Members of Council, Carl Povolitis, Lieutenant with the Police Department, spent a few minutes with you talking about a component of a topic that had become very near and dear to my heart over the last four years or so, which is traffic safety. Back in 2007, you authorized a pilot project for the installation of red light cameras, and since in April of 2008, we went operational on it, went fully operational in July of 2008. So, we have a little bit over a year's worth of experience at four intersections, five approaches with red light cameras, and I guess if we're going to keep this short, what I would tell you is this has become a component of a comprehensive traffic safety system for us, and one of the things that it has done is it allows us to use this to monitor certain intersections, and it allows us to free up those resources then to deal with the multitude of other problems. I'm sure, as you all are all very familiar with, there are a lot of demands on the Police Department and a lot of demands on the traffic officers, whether that's schools, whether that's West Glen Oaks, whether that's various neighborhood stop signs, speeding issues in other parts of the town where those services are needed. And so, part of the assessment of the pilot project, was it worth taking an officer, which was what we found it takes about one full-time equivalent officer to operate this program, was, was, if you will, the trade-off of having an officer not on the street worth installing these cameras and making it a component, and I think, or the evaluation that we bring to you today is, yes, we believe that it is, and what we're really asking you to do is not only do that, but to allow us to judiciously expand the program. What the motion before you would do is allow us to, one, extend the contract, the base term, which would be five years, seven months, the seven months being just to align it with the fiscal year for budgetary purposes and to kind of keep it rolling over for more, or on that, or on that cycle, and then it could be extended one time for an additional five years if the City Council approved it down the road. We've negotiated some reduction in the cost. It'll, does allow us to add up to, up to 10 approaches, and as I tell most people, I cannot give you 10 approaches off the top of my head, looking at a contract that would potentially last us up to 10 years. It gives us some flexibility. I can tell you that some of the intersections we were interested in with red light collisions were those that are, that require Caltrans approval, and so they were not feasible for a one-year pilot project because we would not get through the permitting process with Caltrans, but we would really like to evaluate the intersections of what I call the 134 Brand Central Freeway Complex. We have a number of red light collisions that are very difficult for officers to work We have a number of red light collisions that are very difficult for officers to work based on the speed and the control of traffic, but it is an area where we have a high number of collisions and Monterey and Glendale is another one of those that we would like to evaluate as, as we go forward. Without repeating the staff report, I think if you look in the staff report, if you look at the number of citations written and the overall accident rates in the city using 2005 as a base here, or even comparing 2008 to 2009, you'll see that we have increased our level of enforcement as a department dramatically and you've also seen a consistent reduction in the number of traffic collisions. And I think that's where the proof is in the pudding. As we go forward, we all know that we have very limited resources with which to do this job and technology is going to be, I think, one of those key components that we're going to utilize. I'm not here to tell you that it is the panacea for traffic control or traffic safety issues in Glendale. What I am here to tell you is I think it is a key component that as a tool selectively and, and used carefully, it can really assist the Police Department in improving traffic safety in the, in the city of Glendale. And if that kind of gives you an overhaul, overall view, I would be happy to answer questions or I can give you more detail if you'd like.
Are there any questions? Ms. Friedman?
Let's have a quick question. In terms of the 134 Brandon Central, that whole, that area, I'm assuming that some of the red light violations there are gridlock related type violations? And if so, just because from my own experience there, it seems like we occasionally have a gridlock kind of situation. Would putting in new signage about gridlock help those intersections, do you think, when the cameras go in?
I think the experience on gridlock and signage is mixed because there are a couple of other intersections. If you drive Glen Oaks and Pacific, for example, there are signs that I believe say, don't block the intersection, but at rush hour with the bottlenecking of northbound Pacific, you routinely have people going across the westbound lanes. So I'm skeptical on that and I'm not basing it on, or the intersections we want to evaluate, I'm not basing on violations, I'm really basing on the fact that we have had red light collisions. So it's not a fact that someone's gone through an intersection and has just violated the red light, which is dangerous enough. It's the fact that we continue to have collisions at those intersections based on red light violations. And I know everybody's driven through there, that's a very difficult one for a police officer in a car or a motor officer to work because in order to catch a violator, you probably have to violate the red light yourself, which even with code three equipment is extremely dangerous. And so automated enforcement has the potential to really help us out in that, in that particular area.
Thank you.
And the comments, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I know, I've talked about red light cameras for, gosh, 10 years or so. It was the legal department that kept saying, well, the technology isn't there yet. Too many cases overturned in court, but the technology's finally there and it's working. I know today I was going up Glendale Avenue, sitting at a red light, car next to me, sitting in the red light, no cars trapping, so the guy very carefully next to me, just went right through the red light without a care. I couldn't believe it. I mean, he just went ahead. It's amazing.
You've probably seen the number of citations that we've, we've written and you'll notice that they're declining, which I think is a, is a good thing. It means it's having the desired impact that people are, are stopping and anecdotally people will tell me, especially Mountain Verdugo, they will see people actually come to a full and complete stop before the crosswalk. Novel concept in improving pedestrian safety, but I think that's the positive of using it and it's there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But every single violation is in fact reviewed by somebody in the office before, before a citation is issued. And occasionally, although we don't save them, every once in a while you look at that and you just shake your head when you see something. I mean, the one that sticks in my mind happened to be Pacific in Colorado where an 18-wheeler goes through a solid red light at about 40 miles an hour. And as I said, having, you know, had, having had to deal with some significant traffic collisions over the last four, four years as the Traffic Bureau Commander, you can only imagine what the results of that are. And, you know, I, I also think the step, if you will, the stepped-up enforcement with a police officer and in combination with that technology helps set a standard for Glendale that we take traffic safety very seriously and that we, we do not tolerate violations of the traffic laws in the city.
Mr. Starbird?
Just a quick note, and Carl probably has information on this, but there was an O'Leary Times article, I think in the past year, year and a half, about red light photo enforcement and, and the theme of the article was in LA City. A lot of the tickets are right-hand at a red, people rolling and making a right-hand turn. And the theme of the article was, that's not really a safety issue, it's just a revenue, a collection issue in LA. For us, those right-hand movements are very dangerous. A lot of our pedestrian accidents occur by people who are making right-hand turns after a stop sign or a red light and not looking when they make the turn into pedestrians. The other, the other thing I might, I thought might be interesting, Carl, do you know what the cost of running a red light is today?
It's right about $500. For a red light camera, it's right about $500 by the time the penalty assessments and all that are added in.
Yeah, I've had a number of people who have approached me complaining about the $500 fine. Personally, I wish we could put some on Glen Oaks Boulevard because I think that might deter some of the speeding that's.
You know, Mr. Mayor, another thing that happens in those rolling reds, people have left turn arrow. You know, and they're coming around, all of a sudden this guy's just swinging around. It's happened to me a number of times.
Oh, and the pedestrian, I mean, I don't know how many times I've walked in town and had to step back from a driver who's making a right turn and looking left. It's fairly common and I'm sure anybody who's walked has had that experience. You have to be careful and this is one of those programs that helps remind people that you need to be careful when you drive.
Well, can I have two speaker cards? Mike Mohill?
He's outside.
Not in the room. Margaret Hammond. Go after Margaret.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff. My name is Margaret Hammond. As you're all aware, I am a great supporter of our Police Department. I think those guys are the greatest, bar nobody. They are, as far as I'm concerned, our heroes all the way. They take a lot of junk and whatnot, so this is not a criticism of them in any way and I do support anything that will help them. But last night on the news, I had been out to a meeting and got home and kind of turned the news on and all of a sudden on came this thing about that these red light camera photo enforcement were not working in these three cities. They named the three cities, took a lot of pictures and of course I was like mesmerized because they were showing the accidents in these intersections and the fourth city actually canceled, canceled their contract to have this red light enforcement, photo enforcement. They, they hadn't started it yet, but they canceled it. And the three cities, I can't remember them because as I say, I got home and I was kind of tired and was just like, wow, that they, the accidents were three times as much as what they had been prior at the intersections where these were. And it was Channel Two and I'm sure that I can get the exact cities and information. All I'm saying is, do we have this, you know, the accident statistics before and after and so forth before we go into, you know, a lot more of financial arrangements or anything else? What would those statistics be? And I will try in the morning, I will call Channel Two and get the names or where that newscast came from. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Mike Mohill? Okay, any other?
I have a question of Lieutenant. Currently, we're showing a surplus of about 200-some thousand.
That's correct.
And your recommendation is to expand to 10?
A maximum of 10.
An additional 10 or a total of 10?
That would be an additional 10.
So would, by expanding to 10, would we still retain a surplus or is it that surplus that we're going to use to expand it to 10?
The way we've set the contract up is they don't charge until the first citation is issued. And based on the experience we've had with the pilot project, you're in the hole, if you will, for the first month, but if, if you have a series of violations, so far it is paying for itself or the violators are paying for the enforcement system itself. We have two, two things, so it's not going to, we don't anticipate ending up that surplus. Based on the evaluations that we do before we put it in, we would anticipate that it would still remain in its revenue neutral position.
And you mentioned the, the cost of a citation. Is it any lower if it's a citation issued by a patrol officer?
I do not believe so, but I'm not 100% sure. They have, and they have a different fine distribution for non-automated citations than they do for automated citations. And I've found out in trying to tackle where the money goes, it is an extremely complex issue and it's very difficult to get a straight answer out of the county courts on it.
Okay, I mean, it does sound, obviously we want the, the fine to be a deterrent to anyone, but the, that $500 figure, and I've been, as Mr. Quintero, Mayor Quintero indicated, a couple of, you know, scofflaws, you know, are bold enough to, if they're bold enough to run the red light, they're bold enough to complain about their, you know, their fine as well. How, how can you expect us to afford a $500 fine? It's, well, we don't want you to do that. But, I mean, in my experience, that's, that's a very expensive ticket.
Most of them are, the base fine is not $500, but by the time you take about $150 base fine and multiply up 200 to 300 plus in penalty assessments and very court fees and then a couple of processing fees for the red light thing, you hit $499 to $500. And we, we do not set that fine, it is set by the state and the judicial council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I need a motion in a second.
I move eight, C1 and 2.
Second.
Roll call. Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
Nate D., Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding first quarter financial update and adjustments to the adopted 2009, 2010 budget. A D1 is motion to note and file this financial status report for the period ended September 30th, 2009. A D2 is a resolution of appropriation amending the adopted 2009, 2010 budget.
Mr. Elliott, are you going to talk to us about the rent-controlled property in Manhattan?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have a brief report for the first council. I would like to obviously thank Michelle Flynn for all her hard work in this. We wanted to do a few items tonight and review our 2008, '09 general fund results, talk about, remind everybody how we got to our 2009, '10 budget and talk a little bit about our results thus far this year. This slide indicates where we ended up, our preliminary results, and I will note that this is at this point unaudited, we are still working through our annual audit. You can see where our original budget was for 2008, '09, our revised budget, where we identified a large deficit during mid-year and took actions to close that. We ended up with an adjusted budget of $161 million. Excuse me. The actual results, you can see we ended up on the far right column with about a $4.1 million surplus, which will, we are recommending, as Mr. Starbird said earlier, to take a portion of that and put it into a PERS stabilization fund and we can talk a little bit more about that. That would net us an increase to our unreserve fund balance of $2.4 million, giving us an anticipated unreserve fund balance of about $54.5 million. That equates to a general fund reserve of about 33 percent. In talking about the PERS stabilization reserve, as Mr. Baruchy indicated, we did prepay our annual PERS assessment for the employer portion. This is the second year we've done it, 2008, '09 was the first year we did it. Roughly what you, you do is, PERS estimates what your employer portion is, we send the whole contribution up in one lump sum and they give you a sizable discount. And throughout the year, we, we account for it based on the actual amounts. In this case, the discount ended up going from about $900,000 all the way up to $1,707, and that's obviously because their estimate was a little bit low. I will tell you, this year I checked it today, we prepaid again for 910. The discount again was about $900,000, we're trending just a little bit more than that. So this year was kind of an anomaly, but our recommendation again was, is trying to put that aside for our future PERS rates.
Ms. Mayor, if I can note, Mr. Baruchy just noted, we make just a hair less than 2 percent on our investment portfolio. And if we didn't prepay this, that's what we'd be making on the money that we would still have in the bank. You get about a 4.5 percent discount from PERS initially and as Bob points out, that number gets closer depending on what happens in the course of the year to somewhere between 7 and 8 percent, as opposed to keeping our money in the bank and making a monthly payment on it and then at the end of the year, not having the money. We'd make about 2 percent on that reducing balance. So we more than double our return on the money by doing the prepayment.
And just one last note on, on PERS rates, there's been a lot of discussion on, on PERS and its losses this year because of their loss in the marketplace, but I will tell you, there's still, their portfolio is still $190 billion, so there's still quite, quite a, a lot of assets under investment. PERS has just recently approved a new temporary three-year smoothing and there's pages and pages of actuarial charts and graphs and, and stuff that, that go along with it. Bottom line is, they're, they're trying to ease the increase of the rates to all the cities. Our rates, we just got our new rates and they are going up, but with this new smoothing, the years of 11, 12, and 12, 13, which we anticipated very large increases, while still going up, will be less. So while our rates are going up, we anticipate a little bit less. Our rates this year are 11.5 for miscellaneous and 24 percent for safety. We just got the rates for 10, 11, they're only going up for miscellaneous employees, 11.6 and for safety, 25. We had anticipated a much larger increase for 11, 12, where safety would have gone up another 7 percent and miscellaneous about another 5 percent. With this smoothing, it drops it down, it basically cuts it in half where miscellaneous would be about 13.6 percent and safety about 27. So it's good news in, in relative terms that our rates while going up are, are going to be less, but the, the point of all that is that the stabilization fund, if, if you approve it, would be used to offset some of those increases so we don't have such dramatic increases that we have to account for in our annual budget process.
Just, just a note of interest, there's a lot of focus on the increasing rates for public retirement. In 1985, our safety rate was 35 percent and non-safety was 23 percent. So we, we've lived through about 15 years of really the luxury of the booming economy and the, the lack of high retirement rates, but the day was before this last period when we had actual employer contribution rates far in excess of what we're currently facing as a proportion of our budget. People forget that.
So just to wrap up on this slide, the good news is, we did end the year with a little bit of a surplus after our reductions through mid-year and a lot of the belt tightening that went on.
And, Mr. Mayor, before we leave that, that screen, I just want to note again, the hard work of your staff in the various departments is why we close out what's been a very difficult year, having actually saved more than we had anticipated and closing out the year with a positive balance and actually growing our reserves. I want to commend you for the positive approach you took during that very difficult budget time because you recall, we came in mid-year and had to make a lot of adjustments and we had to go on faith that with the, with the hard hiring freeze and the other various strategies, we'd be able to close the year and keep our budget balanced. Indeed, we've, we've done better than that.
Moving right along. Now we come on to the 9, 10 adjusted budget and what we thought we want to do is just remind everybody what our initial budget gap was when we started the budget process for this year. We had a $9.6 million gap that we had to close. And listed above, or listed in the different columns are the strategies we implemented was the full cost allocation plan, which netted the general fund approximately $2 million back. We consolidated the fleet management, which we extracted $1 million from, from that fund. We counted on $1 million of surplus, which we've just seen that that did materialize. More importantly was the departmental reductions. As you recall, we had 5 to 7.5 percent cuts for all the different departments. The firefighters gave up their COLA. We made other organizational changes with our graphics function and our EHS, which has been downsized. And then some other reductions to close that gap and adopt a balanced budget for this So as of the first quarter, our. So as of the first quarter, our revenues are tracking right where we expect them to be. We have, as you recall, during the adopted budget process, we did reduce our estimates in some categories, like sales tax. I will tell you, our sales tax is down as we thought it would be, although it's trending a little bit better thus far this year, so we're not recommending any adjustments in that area, our property tax. We haven't received any payments thus far. We get our main payment in December and a second one in April, so it's too early to tell. Our assessed valuation, though, was flat for this year. Relatively speaking, that was fantastic news, because a lot of areas of the county were down double digits in their assessed valuation. So at this point, we're not recommending any changes to our revenues or expenditure estimates. Everything's tracking where, where we're expecting it to be. Some first quarter cleanup items. We had some equipment that was requested for the station fire. Some of the equipment in the EOC failed, so they were asking for appropriation for that. Some of the special revenue funds, we are basically just cleanups for grants that we have for fire and police. And there is a request for GWP for $8,000 for a critical piece of equipment that they did not have enough of in their budget. And then the internal service funds, they're asking for appropriations in the wireless communication fund for replacement items. And with that, we're available for questions.
I agree with you, Mr. Elliott. In terms of the PERS, while they certainly made some, yes, boneheaded decisions on some of the real estate investments, overall, I think the portfolio is diversified enough that it'll be, it'll be back. Their private equity investments, I think, are doing quite well, and so I think it will balance out. Are there any comments on the budget?
I'll take those stock tips, if you've got them.
I did mine earlier in the year. Any other comments?
Do you have any cards?
Oh, yeah, I do have a card. Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero and council members. I read the report. Couple things, a couple comments I'd like to make. One comment is here is number one, page number two. The information discussed in this report is based on current information available and the assumption that no stake, no takeaway or borrowing from the state will take place. So what is our contingency plan on that, if there is a takeaway? Number two, and while we did a hiring freeze, did we actually fire anybody? Did anybody actually take a pay cut from the city? This afternoon, I advised you that my wife took a 10 percent pay cut, and more people in her company are doing the same thing. And when we mentioned the fact that we had a revenue, you're talking about a revenue shortfall of $8.5 million? Isn't that the pay raise we gave the employees last year for the city of Glendale? Eight and a half million dollars? Why don't we ask the city employees to give it back to us? Then we can build more soccer fields, more jails, more narcotics and vice squads. We need, we need more personnel, not more salaries. That's where all the money is, is in salaries and pensions, not on this other stuff. We need more cops, but we have to pay for them, but not at a carish trade price. Yeah, the budget is balanced, all right, on who's back? The taxpayers. When are the city employees going to be hurt, just like everybody else here? I took a 10 percent cut this month, and so forth for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you for having the motion.
And you teased me for that, Mr. Quintero, this afternoon. I wasn't appreciative.
Mayor, I move eight, D1 and two.
Roll call.
I need a second. Thank you. Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Nine, under hearings, is 9A Director of Planning regarding Glendale Register of Historic Resources listing and Mills Act contract for the property at 1220 Cortez Drive. At 9A1 is a resolution designating the property as a historic resource and authorizing the Mills Act contract.
Mr. Starbird.
I think we're open the hearing, the public hearing.
Do you have any cards?
And I'll go to Jay Platt for the staff report.
Good evening, Jay Platt for the Planning Department. Tonight, we have a nomination for the Glendale Register, as well as for the Mills Act program, for a really fine example of a Spanish colonial revival house in the Rossmoyn neighborhood. And I have a few slides to show you. There we go. 1220 Cortez Drive was built in 1928. It was designed, apparently, by its builder, Ernest Ridenhour. We're not sure that he was an architect, but we've seen a couple of other buildings of his that have really excellent attention to detail. When the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed this house in September, they really thought it was one of the best examples that they had seen of the Spanish style in the city, and it really has a lot of the character-defining features that we associate with the style and then, and more. So you can see the location of the house in the Rossmoyn neighborhood, on the beautiful curving street of Cortez Drive. And the current owners received some historic photos from a previous owner, showing that in 1948 till today, the house has not changed very much, certainly from the street. In fact, you can see at the top that the, what was originally an exterior balcony had been enclosed. The current owners, Al and Desiree Shire, have done a tremendous job restoring this house and did all of the work to the highest standards before they came to the Preservation Commission to nominate the house. You can really see some of the work. You see even on rear facades, where you have some interesting architectural details, like this double-level kind of terrace and balcony. All around the house, there was originally a very rough texture coat that had been put on at some point, that in many cases could disqualify a house from being eligible for the register. They took that coat off and put a smooth stucco finish around the house, really just totally enhancing its look. And then when you look at the details of this house, it's really remarkable. The tile work around the front door and the door itself is kind of the most psychedelic entryway in Glendale, maybe, but really exquisite details all around. There's an old incinerator that has a smokestack that looks like a minaret. There's this turret that has the really interesting kind of beehive design down at the bottom. There are a few, a couple of beautiful outbuildings that were built a little bit after the original house was built, but have the same level of attention to detail. And then some really wonderful ironwork from gates and grills over the windows to light fixtures. And probably one of the most interesting features is this tile work that's been featured in a publication that was put out about tile work throughout Southern California, and several of the pieces of this property were highlighted. There's Batch Elder Tile in the upper left with that fish fountain, and just beautiful work at various locations throughout the outdoor portions of the house, including these two kind of panels, which are very unusual details that were called out in these, in the publication about tile. The owners have requested the Mills Act property tax reduction, and you'll, you probably know the name Desiree Shire. She was recently appointed by Councilman Weaver to the Historic Preservation Commission. She's here if you have any questions, or I'm available for any other questions.
Well, it is one beautiful home. I've driven by it countless times, but what a great job of restoring it over. It's been like this for quite a while. It's nothing, it's nothing new, but the interior shots, pool and so forth, it's just spectacular, spectacular home.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, and I know she's gonna do a great job on the Historic Commission. One feature on there that brought back old memories, incinerator. I imagine back in, in the 40s, my father had an incinerator in the hills, with a brush not more than 10 feet. Well, there's nothing funny in that. That was serious at the time, and all the garbage went into that incinerator. It's amazing what you could do then. No more, no more. Time's up.
Mr. Najarian.
It is a beautiful house, and as, as you were scrolling through the pictures, just one feature kind of stuck out, like a sore thumb, and that's the garage door. Is that an orig, can you address the garage door? I mean, the rest of the house has been restored so meticulously. That looks like my garage door, and...
Yeah, the garage door is not original.
My garage door is kind of, I mean, it's not junky, but it, it doesn't go with, do they have plans to...
We could condition the Mills Act contract to include looking at the garage door and setting up a timeframe to replace that. The Preservation Commission lately has been very concerned about inappropriate garage doors, and they didn't call this one out, partly maybe because it's so far from the street. It's really hard to see at that distance, but if the council would like, we could certainly put that as a condition in the Mills Act contract.
I mean, I don't want to be a nudge about it, but it's...
Details are important.
Perhaps we could ask the owner...
Especially when you compare it to the, you know, fine, detailed tile, and they restored the second-story balcony to a open balcony and all that. I wouldn't, I mean, I have no idea what the cost is and what it would be restored to, is another question altogether, but...
Mr. Najarian, why don't we ask her, since she is one of our new commissioners? We haven't met her personally.
I don't want to put her on the spot.
Sure, if she'd like to come to the...
She's at here the whole meeting.
And one thought, there are three garage doors on the house. Two are probably more, more appropriate than the one you're talking about, so maybe they could all match.
And while you're up here, the, in front of that gorgeous front door, the stonework on the ground, is that original?
Yes, from what we can tell, the original thicketstone to the entry and as well in the backyard. Yes, regarding the garage door...
We'll need your name for the record.
Oh, sorry, Desiree Shire. Again, it's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Again, appreciate your appointment. Looking forward to serving on the Glendale Preservation Commission. Yes, we are in a phase of restoration. We have owned the house for just a little over two years. The garage door is, is an eyesore, and it's a pet peeve of mine, and yes, it will be replaced. We just haven't gotten there yet. We need to do landscaping in the front, and there's quite a few other projects that we need to do, which is actually part of the Mills contract that you submit a list of continuing projects for the restoration and for the benefit of the tax benefit. So yes, that is one of our projects.
That's on your list.
This is your second house, too, right?
Yes, we've done another one on the corner of Cordova and Stalker, Spanish style there. We restored that. It's our passion, and we've just taken cues from the building to kind of peel back the layers that had been done incorrectly, many in the 60s and 70s on this house. It was very dilapidated. So again, year by year, we're making more and more progress. We've come really far in the two years we've owned it, but many more projects to come. Does that answer your question?
That does. I'm glad that I'm not the, you know, I'm glad that I wasn't being too...
Oh, not at all.
Difficult in that, but, okay, so. So if that's on your list, then I would have no problems with...
I would support conditioning it, because I think that when you get, especially a Mills Act, but when you go on to the Historic Register, it's beyond just being in a district or, you know, I think that, that sets a good precedent. Since you're doing it anyway, it's not an issue, so.
I will follow your suggestion and support that.
We're gonna close the public hearing...
I'd be happy to move 9A1.
...with the stipulation on condition. Okay, and let me just add that what also makes it interesting, in addition to a beautiful house and significant architecture, is that someone named Vito Garino owned this house from 1945 to 1965, and he was the first promoter of professional basketball in Los Angeles. He promoted the first NBA game in LA, which was a 1959 exhibition game at the Sports Arena between the Philadelphia Warriors and St. Louis Hawks, and it was Wilt Chamberlain's NBA debut game. Anyway, that, over 12,000 people showed up that evening. Very interesting. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
We need a second. Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Did we incorporate the...
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next, we return to oral communications, where discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And City Manager Mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Sharon Wiseman.
It's different as the night goes on. Good evening again, Mayor Quintero, members of the council, staff, and the audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. This afternoon, at the joint Glendale City Council and Glendale redevelopment meeting, the discussion and of an analysis, the proposed zone change application, requesting advertising signage overlay zone, which was requested by the Americana and the Glendale Galleria were the ones making the request. If this overlay is allowed, it will put other Glendale merchants at a disadvantage. Why? Because brand auto dealers applied to put up a billboard, and the motion was denied. The merchants on brand had to take down their signs, and so the only ones left were Sealy's and Forest Lawn. All the merchants are hurting, so why should they be denied the privilege of advertising? How about Kenneth Village, Adam Square, Montrose Shopping Center, the Foothill strip malls? As I say, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. We gave Mr. Caruso $88 million gift of property, and then gave him our city park for $1. Gave away our park. We are still paying and will continue to pay $3.5 million interest each year on the $48 million bond, which we took out to pay for the land, which we gave to Mr. Caruso. It's like having somebody pay your mortgage for you. Anyway, and I doubt that the resale, from what I understand, taxes that we get do not cover the interest payment. It comes out of the Glendale citizens' pockets. So therefore, here we are back again to giving away some more of our rules and regulations, or breaking some of our rules and regulations, which the city of Glendale, the city council, over the years have sought fit to put on the books to protect our city. And we're going to turn around, because we have people who want to make money, just willy-nilly putting up, wanting to put up signs and so forth. When, in the original contract that was with the city that Mr. Caruso had, there were no billboards talked about. They, it was to be poster, and I have the records from the court where he specified, no, he was not going to put up any billboards on the outside. That was why he had sued us, that he said they were only going to be posters, four by six. So all of a sudden, we've changed our rules. I wondered, how come he, those were allowed the whole time, those signs and so forth around the bottom on, on brand in Colorado that he was building? I thought, well, I guess they're doing that just in that, during that period of time, but that they would come down when that building or when that was completed. So I'm just saying that here we are again. And by the way, I want to get back to the waste, the bulky pickup items, is 818-548-3916. And I know that somebody coming in told me that the www.glendalwaste.com, they will be happy, and you can put in your request for that bulky waste pickup on that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharon Wiseman, followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, council members and staff. I'm Sharon Wiseman from far north Glendale. And during the November 2nd, 2009, meeting of the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, a resolution in support of the Glendale City Council's position on the 710 extension project was adopted. I'd like to thank the council, particularly Erin Najarian, who was the first on the council to bring this issue to the attention of Glendale residents, and council members Draymond, Friedman, and Mayor Quintero for their forward thinking on this issue. The resolution states, "Resolution in support of the Glendale City Council's position on the 710 extension project. The 710 freeway extension has been..." The 710 freeway extension has been a controversial issue for the past 60 years. The current Caltrans project to study the five possible routes for a tunnel from the current Terminus Estate Route 710 in Alhambra to the 52210 or 605 freeways is of great concern to the residents of the Crescenta Valley. When the 210 freeway was built in the 1970s, the character of the Crescenta Valley changed with the increased traffic. Each subsequent extension of the 210 has brought more noise and pollution, yet has failed to ease the traffic burden. Much of the Southern California freeway grid was proposed during the Eisenhower administration and has never been built. Subsequent mass public transit projects and developments in shipping and rail transport of freight have made the highway plan obsolete. The city of South Pasadena proposes several upgrades to existing streets and freeway on and off ramps, plus upgrades to bus and metro rail service as a cheaper, faster and better alternative. The millions of dollars proposed for the 710 tunnel study and subsequent lengthy environmental impact studies would be better spent on these alternatives that lead to more sustainable transportation policies. On July 28th, 2009, after much discussion, the city council, Glendale City Council voted to oppose any extension of State Route 710, Surface Route or one of the five tunnel locations being studied. The Far North Glendale Homeowners Group and the Crescenta Valley Community Association supports the Glendale City Council in opposition to this project and requests the support of the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council on this issue critical to regional transportation. And I wanted you to know that development with the Homeowners Coordinating Council. And thank you. And since I have a few more minutes left, relevant to the traffic safety, and I think red light cameras are an excellent addition, and I'd like to highlight again for the public because I suspect the council's already aware of it, the issue that Dan Kimber mentioned in his column recently, that we've also been made aware of, another group not involved with the homeowners association, all Glendale education, social justice advocates, of which I'm a steering committee member, and that's driving certificates being issued for cash rather than having the teen actually do the classroom and more importantly, the behind-the-wheel driving training. And that is a horrible safety issue because some young people, it's easy to pass a DMV exam, there's just a few questions, and without having the actual classroom and behind-the-wheel training, they might not actually even know the rules of the road. And part of the really extremely bad driving, maybe due to ignorance, not just aggressiveness. And so I really hope the council supports the police. We're working with the police to bring them more information about this issue and we, I urge everybody listening to take that seriously. And parents need to be very aware of the potential real safety issues. Kids die because they don't know how to drive properly. And it's no shortcut to bypass the training. They, they actually need the hours behind the wheel with trained, professional driving instructors. And thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mike Mohill, resident Glendale. Claims against the city. Mr. Weaver questioned about the claims against the city a few weeks ago. I would like to ask the Councilman Weaver, is there a way to prevent some of the claims against the city? In a five, in a five-month period, there were six claims against the city, that was through April through August of this year, totaling $1.2 million. In particular, there was repeated claims. These claims concern accidents caused by 15 garbage trucks, 13 fallen trees, five for broken sidewalks, two for street repair and two for city vehicles, et cetera. What has been done so far to prevent such accidents from happening repeatedly? I.e., in-house training, new manuals, the possible use of outside training consultants, et cetera? The city needs to reduce the occurrence of repeated claims. The statement of Councilmember Weaver of how Glendale measures up to other cities was not supported by any public document. If Mr. Weaver obtained these documents through the effort of the city, then the city has violated the Public Records Act by not sharing them with the public upon my request. Thank you. Here's a copy for Mr. Weaver and for the city clerk.
I don't need a copy.
Okay, then closes oral communications. Any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mohill, out of look at city of LA. Wasn't in the headlines today, $148 million in claims or whatever? I think, and the district attorney is working at, that maybe I'm misquoting on that, but a claim is a claim. It doesn't mean they're getting paid. And if you think our city streets, whatever, are bad, go to LA. It's a circus over there with the problems they have. So compared to other cities, small, and a claim is just a claim.
Mr. Weaver, I went to the city...
Wait, oral communication is done.
Please, have a seat. You can't do that, Mr. Mohill.
Or a commi, claim is a claim. You can put in a claim for anything. You can sue anybody for anything. It doesn't mean you're going to win.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Najarian?
Couple comments. Number one, to Margaret, what, what we did this afternoon was to take a very small step and ask for staff to come back to us with some information on possible options for an overlay zone. Council has not committed itself to any way on this, but in fact, just the opposite, to bring it out to the public so we can have a discussion. But it is unfair to characterize it only as a request by Mr. Caruso. The difference is that this is also requested by General Growth Properties. Okay, I just kept hearing the Caruso theme. And for those in the audience, the very unusual and ironic twist to this years-long story is that now General Growth and Caruso are holding hands and in fact are partners in their request for an overlay zone. To Sharon Wiseman and the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, thank you very much for coming out on record. It's important that we continue to express our opposition to the 710 tunnel. The best way is to support the low-billed multimode alternative through South Pasadena and also reprogram the $800 million set aside for the studies and the EIRs on that 710 tunnel and put that into the light rail and to the gold line and other lines as well, so people don't have to ride the freeways, so we don't have to put the freight trucks on our freeways and we can work towards a sustainable transportation plan. So I hope other groups throughout the city take, take the lead of the Homeowners Coordinating Council and enact a resolution in opposition to the tunnel.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Draymond?
Mr. Mayor, if you would indulge me, this is not related to oral communications. It's something I neglected to ask earlier in the meeting during council member and staff comments. I just wanted to inquire, I didn't see on the agenda or in the agenda preview nor in the future agendas that we, we receive each week, anything about a request placed on the agenda, the issue of the MWD representative and council member Friedman. And perhaps he was saying it, not realizing he was saying it, but when I reviewed the archive, the city attorney had said it'll be on next week. He may have just been thinking about it in terms of it being a regular kind of nomination for a board or commission, but I don't see it anywhere. So that being the case, I'd like to ask when that is going to be on the agenda.
And it should be on the tentative agenda for December 1st, our plan, which Laura's back and I think we have a full city council.
Thank you very much.
So we'll make sure it's on there.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Is there any new business?
There is none.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. We are adjourned.
Second. Thank you.